On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended through December 7th. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. And for those members of the public that are on the call, welcome. Given the high level of public interest in the 2021 budget, I've been requested to shift regular business item A, which is AB 8045, amending IMC 16.35 construction hours, to the last item under regular business. It will become agenda item C so we can consider the budget items first. Is there any objection? And council members, please use the chat if you would like to register an objection. Hearing none, the agenda is revised accordingly. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Thanks. Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you all. We have all seven council members in attendance this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that you all keep your microphones muted, but you are welcome to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is audience comments. And for those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. And for anyone else who has joined us tonight and would like to make comments but didn't sign up in advance, please press star 3 on your phone. This will allow the clerk to see you raising your hand. We will call the last two digits of your phone number when it's your turn to make comments. And city clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Great. If you are making comments tonight, please make sure you address the whole council and not individuals. And although this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up as needed. When you are recognized by the city clerk, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. And limit your comments to five minutes, and re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. I also wanted to remind those with us tonight that there is a public hearing for AB 7991. This is the proposed 2021 budget and salary ordinance. And if you would like to make comments on that topic, you will have an opportunity later in the meeting when we open that public hearing. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. And we thank you for taking the time to come tonight and address us. City clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, and first, I'd like to remind our phone-in callers that when I unmute you, you'll have a two-step process. You'll need to press star 6 on your phone to unmute yourself in the meeting system, and then you'll also need to unmute your own phone if you had muted that as well. So the first caller is Jake Olson Jacobson. Jake, I'm requesting you unmute now.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you. And good evening. My name is Jake Olson Jacobson. I am a longtime resident currently living at 480 Mountain Park Boulevard Southwest here in Issaquah. And I led the Issaquah Trolley Group during the years 2015 through 2019, but have been involved for many years since the current trolley car arrived in the city of Issaquah. Mayor, Issaquah City Council, and citizens of Issaquah. As many of you are aware, the Issaquah History Museums has voted to discontinue the Issaquah Trolley as a program of the Issaquah History Museums. This action was primarily due to the required increase in liability insurance required by the city of Issaquah roughly doubling the insurance premium required to operate the trolley on city-owned tracks. The Issaquah Valley Trolley has been a very visible and engaging part of Issaquah's community for many years and is now a part of Issaquah's history. Much like the refurbished Issaquah Depot, Shell gas station, Booms Candies, Triple X, and other places of public and historical interest in Issaquah. I am now leading a group of trolley enthusiasts that include the trolley committee members responsible for operating the 95-year-old trolley car under the Issaquah History Museums. We are very much interested in finding a new operational sponsor able to provide the organizational means to continue Issaquah Valley Trolley operations once the health risks of the current pandemic subside and we are able to operate while ensuring the safety of our guests. We are asking for the city council and community's help to support our effort, finding a local sponsoring organization and sources of funding the incremental insurance costs required to continue operation of this well-loved Issaquah landmark. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Jake. City clerk, has anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, the phone-in caller with the last two digits, 29, I'm requesting you unmute now.
Thank you. I'm here to speak this evening to AB 7991, so I'm happy to wait until then.
Thank you very much. Do you want to provide the city clerk your name so that she can include it in the list of speakers for the public hearing?
That would have been a great idea to start with. Yes, thank you, Mayor Polly. It's Kathy McCory at the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. City clerk, who is next up for public comments this evening?
We don't have anyone else on the list for the general audience comments tonight, but I'll take a quick moment to remind folks that if you're interested in making general comments now, you can press star 3 on your phone. That's star 3. And let's give them just a moment. And I don't see that anyone's indicated a desire to speak at this time.
That's great. Thank you, city clerk. And thank you, Jake, for coming and speaking to us tonight as a council and a mayor and administration. And we have received email on this topic as well. So thank you for providing more comment and telling us about the work that's been going on. As a reminder, anybody that's watching this evening or here can also send us written comments at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And if comments have been received by email on any of tonight's agenda topics, they will be acknowledged by our council president, Council President Hunt, under the relative agenda item. The next item of business this evening on our agenda is committee and regional reports. I will call each council member by name. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I'll be very brief this evening. Just a heads up, the next meeting of the King County Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council isn't until the new year, so nothing new to report here. But that being said, earlier today, I sent around a final draft copy of the committee's shared revenue principles, which I've described before as a document that local government, nonprofit, and private sector organizations can look to when considering affordable housing tools and revenues. So if any of you have any thoughts between now and the end of the year, I'd love to hear them, and I'd be happy to share our comments with the rest of the committee. And if anyone out in the community would like to review the document or chat about it with me too, feel free to send me a note at zachh@issaquahwa.gov, and I'd be happy to walk you through it. The next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors is this Wednesday, November 18th at 3:30 PM. And then I will let either Councilmember Goodman or Deputy Council President Ray give the report for last week's Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. That concludes my report. Mayor Polly.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember De Michelle. I attended the Healthier Here governing board on November 5th, and steady progress is being made on the Healthier Here mission of integrating behavioral health with physical health through information sharing. Like EFR, Eastside Fire and Rescue, Healthier Here is working toward nonprofit status, and they are making progress on that status. We also received a COVID-19 update from Patty Hayes, the Director of Seattle King County Public Health, most of which is sadly already out of date. The other meeting I attended, I attended a legislative subcommittee meeting for the Eastside Transportation Partnership last Thursday, and will attend an Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting tomorrow morning where the legislative priorities will be finalized. The completion of SR 18, which is this council's top priority, has been included among ETP's legislative priorities as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Very short report stating that I will be attending the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Board meeting on Friday morning. There is not an agenda there yet, and that concludes my report.
That is short. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Nora Goodman here. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met last Thursday, November 12th. We had several things on the agenda. The first item of note is that I think it was 32 or 33 firefighters in the last month have been exposed to COVID, taking them out of service for a bit. And that number is not unlike numbers that other agencies' first responders are seeing given the uptick in cases. But there's no impact to service levels at Eastside Fire and Rescue, so it was more just a report out that things are picking up and the numbers of exposure are reflecting that. We also had a presentation regarding the mobile integrated health program, and that was jointly presented by the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank and also Eastside Fire. And we've asked the Eastside Fire Administration to work with our administration to bring that presentation to the full council because it was very good. And then we also had a presentation regarding a wildfire urban interface fire risk map, and hopefully that will come to a council meeting soon as well. Coming next, at our next full council meeting, our first meeting in December, will be some information on a new policy that Eastside Fire Administration is considering, and that's a possible new fund that would use Eastside Fire and Rescue funds to pay private ambulance service, AMR, for transports that Eastside Fire is unable to do because they are unavailable on other calls, and just unavailable for some reason. And then if those patients cannot afford to pay AMR, then the policy would provide that Eastside Fire would pay AMR for those services. So I'm going to bring some information to the full council at our first meeting in December so that you all can weigh in on that, so we can provide feedback at our next Eastside Fire Board of Directors meeting, which is, I think it's the 11th. I think it's the second Thursday of each month. Then the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will have a special meeting this Thursday at 2:00. And on that agenda is the report back on the action that we, as a council, took on the funding recommendations. We're going to talk about the funding application in 2020/21 contract for the destination marketing organization, the 2020 membership composition and term options, the mayor's recovery task force, and we will talk about our 2021 meeting schedule and work plan items. It's a virtual meeting, but it is a public meeting. And again, it's this Thursday at 2:00, and that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met last Thursday from 7 till 9 PM. The only decision of note was that we recommended that the SCA Board of Directors adopt a policy that Zone 1 and Zone 3 coordinators for the emergency management, the King County Emergency Management Zone coordinators, remain independent contract positions with regular opportunities for the zone partners, including Fire District Cities in King County, to evaluate their performance. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting this Thursday from 10:00 AM until noon. The board will be briefed on housing needs in the region and next steps in the development of the regional housing strategy. Board will also hear an update on the 2022 regional transportation plan and will take up a recommendation to certify center plans for Kent and Kirkland. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I thought I was going to go a whole night without missing that mute button, but I missed it by a second. Okay. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. The King County Growth Management Policy Council will be meeting on December 2nd at 4:00 PM in a virtual format, and at this time, the agenda has not been set, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. On November 6th, Mayor Polly, Councilmember De Michelle, and I met with committee members of the Trolley Committee. This was a community meeting, and while we do not always report out regarding all of our community meetings, the mayor suggested in that meeting that we would report back out to the community on this particular meeting in regional reports due to the community and council interest in the topic. The Trolley Committee is a part of the Issaquah History Museums, and with the recent decision made by the Issaquah History Museum's Board of Directors to not continue operating the trolley, the Trolley Committee is now actively pursuing alternative options for continuing to operate the trolley, as we heard in public comments this evening. City council was notified about the History Museum's decision to not continue operating the trolley last month citing insurance costs and concerns around COVID-19 and safety. We discussed funding for the increase in insurance costs with the Trolley Committee, and we relayed the following information. On October 19th, city council approved allocation of funds as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and these funds included a grant for the Issaquah Valley Trolley operations with the total requested amount of $7,500. The application explains that insurance had increased from $6,000 annually to $12,500 annually. And this request was made before the decision on the closure. LTAC grant money is still available for this purpose of offsetting the insurance cost increase experienced by the trolley, and that grant is still in place and can be awarded to any nonprofit organization that may partner with the trolley. The Trolley Committee is pursuing alternatives to partner with, to continue operating the trolley, and discussion about those partnerships was a main focus of our meeting with the committee. The city council and mayor look forward to supporting the Trolley Committee in this effort as they look to find a partner to continue to operate this important community asset. And also, I have, as council president during our virtual meetings, been summarizing email comments that we've received on topics, so I will at this time point out that we have received around seven emails in recent days in support of continuing the trolley operations from community members. That concludes that report. And then additionally, I have two upcoming meetings to report on. There is a Salmon Recovery Council meeting of Wyra 8, which is the technical name for our watershed, and this will meet on Thursday, November 19th at 2:00 PM. And then there will also be a Title 18 ad hoc meeting, which is the land use part of our municipal code and the ad hoc committee of the council. We will meet tomorrow at 4:00 PM, and we will be reviewing a draft public engagement plan. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. Earlier this evening, there was a special meeting to hold an executive session to discuss the sale of real estate per RCW 42.30.110 for N1 for NC, and no action will be taken in open session this evening. So I have to start off with news on COVID because there was a lot of things that have changed since this weekend. There are new statewide restrictions. Yesterday, it was heartbreaking to learn that it was the most dangerous public health day our state has seen in the last 100 years. In response to the rapid spread of COVID-19, Governor Jay Inslee announced the following restrictions for the next four weeks. Indoor gatherings with people outside the household will be prohibited unless they quarantine for the 14 days prior to the social gathering, or quarantine for the seven days prior to the gathering, and receive a negative COVID-19 test result that is no more than 48 hours prior to the gathering. Outdoor gatherings are limited to no more than five people, and starting at 12:01 AM on November 18th, restaurants and bars will be closed for indoor service, with to-go services and restricted outdoor dining still allowed. In-store retail, grocery stores, and personal services are limited to 25% of occupancy and must close any congregate areas, areas where people gather together inside an office or a facility. Religious services will be limited to 25% of indoor capacity or 200 people, whichever is less. And quires, bands, or ensembles are prohibited from performing. Wedding and funeral ceremonies can go on with limited attendance, but receptions of any size are prohibited indoors. Indoor service will be closed at fitness facilities and gyms, and youth and adult amateur sporting activities are limited to outdoors and only with facial covering. All K-12s and higher education, childcare, and court-related proceedings are exempt from these new restrictions. Following the new statewide restrictions, the following city facility programs will be closed starting on November 17th. The Issaquah Community Center, including any reservations, Issaquah preschool, and all indoor sports. Childcare via the Schoolhouse Rec program, the senior centers to-go lunches, and limited programming at Julius Bone Pool will continue to be offered under strict COVID-19 precautions. So just to repeat, childcare via the Schoolhouse Rec program, the senior centers to-go lunches, and limited programming at Julius Bone Pool will still be offered. More information is available on our website at issaquahwa.gov/covid19. So as we plan for the holidays, we must be safe in how we celebrate. The best option is simply to stay home and only celebrate with those you live with. The fatigue of necessary pandemic precautions is challenging for all of us, but if we all work together to reduce potential exposure, the more we can ensure our healthcare system is not overwhelmed, our loved ones are protected, and we are supporting our community's overall health. The second item on my report this evening is Puget Sound Energy's Green Direct program, and this item is on tonight's consent agenda. The project was delayed nearly 18 months, so I'd like to give you an update on this program. Issaquah is committed to protecting our environment and reducing our carbon footprint. To reduce emissions from city operations, Issaquah enrolled in the purchase of renewable energy for Puget Sound Energy's Green Direct program. Green Direct provides renewable energy for larger corporate and municipal customers that is local, affordable, and responsible. The first round of Green Direct provides wind energy from a new facility located in southwest Washington in Lewis and Thurston Counties called the Skookumchuck Wind Project. The project is going online this month and will provide about 2/3 of our electricity needs for city buildings in operation. We are also enrolled in Green Direct 2, which will provide another 30% of our electricity from solar energy through the new Lund Hill Solar Project. At 150 megawatts, Lund Hill will be the largest solar project in the state and is expected to go online next year. Together, these projects will help us reduce our carbon footprint, meet our greenhouse gas emissions reductions goals. The Green Issaquah Partnership will build upon existing citywide community stewardship efforts to foster long-term support for restoration and maintenance of Issaquah's parks and natural areas. That concludes the mayor's report for this evening. And before we move on to our regular business items, the council will be receiving two informational updates. The first, ID 0773, is per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, update. And I'd like to ask Public Works Director Bob York to present this item and explain to anybody watching what that strange word was that I just said. You're up, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Can everybody hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can.
Okay. You stole my second sentence, but I'll go back to exactly what that means in a minute. Thank you, Mayor Polly. Good evening, council members. This is Bob York, Public Works Director. Tonight, I have an intentionally brief presentation on the progress being made by the 2020 PFAS partnership over the last year. Mayor Polly already defined PFAS, but briefly, that's a family of substances that includes PFOS, our main parameter of concern, that, as National Geographic recently called it, forever chemicals, a family of forever chemicals. That means they're designed with all their positive properties, they're not biodegrade, they're very persistent in the environment, and that's why it's a challenge to our city in terms of dealing with it. But we're making progress, as I'll talk to you about in a second. Next, the definition of a partnership is the city of Issaquah, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and Department of Ecology are tackling this unique problem together, as Issaquah was in the state of Washington, one of the first and one of the most unexpected cities to ever have to deal with this issue. So it's a collaboration that's going on, and I just have a 2020 update, and I'll provide that in the ensuing slides. Next slide, Tisha. Brief history, we were required by the EPA to take samples of what they called unregulated chemicals, and that included this family of compounds named PFAS. And in 2015, we finally recognized we had a detect of PFOS, or PFOS, to use the specific compound. And of course, the city at that time, slightly before I arrived on the scene, started looking into what that really meant. Then it became abundantly clear when we were in the national media in January of 2016 that we had an issue we had to deal with, and then we became the earnestly moving quickly into determining what we should do next. So the council in March of 2016, as I recall, just as I was coming on board as a city employee, authorized something approximating a million dollars to do two things. One is the hydrogeologic study, Phase Zero, I'll call it, because it was a city-led study. And secondly, was a project to put a carbon treatment system in Well 4 where the detects were occurring. Remarkably, in three months after the council approved, we had a system up and running that's done a job that exceeds expectations because it produces non-detectable PFOS and PFASs, and it was done cost-effectively, and it's relatively maintainable. It's actually been a success story if you think about it that way. So with that success in hand, we, the Phase 1 hydrogeologic study suggested that firefighting foam, fire training facilities were the likely primary cause of PFOS in the groundwater. And so over time, we engaged with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and starting in 2017, 2018, formed a collaboration with them, and fortuitously, Department of Ecology, this is unique to them, so they, in a situation where the regulator actually got involved, helped form this partnership. So in July of 2018, the council approved Phase 1. That was done in collaboration with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and we were fortunate enough to get an ecology, or excuse me, an department. to get an ecology, or excuse me, an Department of Commerce grant to fund the vast majority of the Phase 1 efforts. Then that was over in early 2019, and then in late 2019, the last time I reported on this issue in front of the council, we formed two new partnerships. One, we established our partnership, one with an inter-agency agreement with Department of Ecology that provided some incremental funding for the Issaquah-led portion of the job, and then another inter-local agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue to continue this partnership. So we began Phase 2 work, and the results of that work, as of today, I'll describe in the next slides. Some of the work, most of the work is being done by Eastside Fire and Rescue's consultant, Farrelon, an Issaquah-based company, and they've been doing a good job. Those tasks included additional, and I have some more metrics coming up, additional shallow and intermediate monitoring wells, and borings, and subsequent collection of groundwater sample and soil samples. There's a groundwater monitoring and soil monitoring over a period of a one-year period, and we're just finished the third round of sampling for the parameters. One additional potential source area was evaluated, and it turns out after the initial sampling, we found out that was not a candidate site for contributions to our problems in the soil and groundwater. And additional characterization occurred and is occurring at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters Site on 175 Newport Way Northwest. Finally, and just beginning from Farrelon, is the development and initial discussions of the Source Remediation Action Plan and other deliverables. The city side of this is with our longstanding consultant experts, GeoSynTech, and we're supporting the effort with refinement of our existing groundwater model, and that model will, after calibration, be used to look at the different options in early 2021. Next slide, Tisha. Here's a slightly modified slide from what was in your packet. Over the weekend, council members asked that I show the legend of what all this thing, this map shows. My intention was to just show the boundaries of the investigatory area, the area of interest, and you can see on here some landmarks. Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters Site is shown on there on Newport Way. You can see the areas of interest include areas farther north of that bordering Newport Way, and then all the way up to some of our wells, over to the other side of the valley, in some cases across Interstate 90, and then some areas on the east side of, or more east of the valley, including Memorial Park, and some areas on the other side of the creek, actually. So the areas in shaded orange are the actual sites where we just, or the consulting team pulled the latest round of samples. So this is a difficult slide to see, but you can see the legend there, and I'd be open to providing this slide in more detail if anyone in the council or the council is interested. Again, there's a body of work being collected, and there's lots of graphics being readied for finalization in mid-2021, where we will share the QAQC results of all this effort. Next slide, Tisha. So here's the key highlights of 2020. The executive team meets monthly remotely. That includes the mayor, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Fire Chief, a board member from Eastside Fire and Rescue, supporting staff and consultants, and a number of longstanding Department of Ecology staff that really understand remediation. So we have almost a dream team of different representations here of... So I think the punchline is, this has been successful and it continues to be so. We've installed 35 more borings as a result of Phase 2, 18 of which of the borings became monitoring wells. We've collected two rounds of sampling, or excuse me, three rounds now. Two rounds have been, we got the results back and are digesting those results. All these samples are done to a level of competency that they will withstand the scrutiny of Department of Ecology in terms of QAQC. So extraordinary effort being made to have a defensible sampling program. So far, we've, or the entire Phase 2 has 55 unique groundwater, or excuse me, soil samples, and a total of 73 groundwater samples. And as the next phase of samples, as the previous phase gets analyzed, the next phase is adjusted somewhat. The groundwater model is being updated, and again, once it's updated, it'll be a tool to use for completion of this work. Discussions have started on the interpretation of the results and what we think the interim remedial actions will be. Next slide, Tisha? So where we are, we're on schedule. We should be complete as per our IAA and ILA and satisfy the ecology requirements. Tonight is a consent item where we extend the city's IAA with ecology to allow much more time than needed to perform the hydrogeologic work and modeling calibration. Overall, the recent analysis I looked at says we're 80% spent, and we're roughly 80% complete. If we do go, and we're close to budget, if we do go over budget, which I think will be nominal, if anything, the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue split the overrun equally. So, next slide, Tisha, please. The city asked me, and actually Ecology did too, what does PFAS or PFOS cost us and the rest of our partnership in terms of costs, both costs of things we actually incurred and costs of staff efforts that could have been spent doing something else? And the best guess I can come up with without the detailed accounting, which I think is reasonable, is this effort has cost the city itself nominally about $2 million, running the treatment plant, the public outreach, and this is since 2015, where all of a sudden we learned what the word PFOS stood for. And EFR's costs have been roughly .3 million, I think their staff time above that, and two grants have occurred, one the Department of Commerce grant, and that's .2 million, and ecology funding, half a million, and that doesn't include their significant investment and their staff time helping the partnership be successful. So something on the order of $3 million is what we're talking about here because of the fact that the word PFAS and PFOS ended up being Issaquah concern. Last slide, Tisha, I think. So we're off and running to do the finalization of this work, and the final report would be ready by mid-2021, at which time I think you'll be interested in another update to council on the findings of that, in which case I'll bring more technical services into play to help me and our team define what all this means to the city. We are constantly on the alert for regulatory developments. There's a 700-page document that's just been produced by Ecology on the draft rulemaking for what they call a chemical action report. Similarly, there's Department of Health, evolution of what our requirements will be for drinking water. That's all progressing nicely, except for COVID may delay all this. But we're tracking it. It's an important aspect of not only the cleanup, but also our water utility, so we know what's going on. There's an active effort to try to get more funding, both either from the Department of Ecology or through the legislature, for Phase 3. And Phase 3 would be the time where we do an initial remedial action. We're considering the EFR site as the most likely place for that, but I should, I wouldn't, would be remiss by not saying there's other areas that, throughout, in some places in the city where some unofficial investigatory levels have been showing up as areas where we should also not forget to evaluate. So with that, I think the department, I think the elected officials and the team members would agree that our partnership is strong, and we're deliberately focusing on getting to a solution that deals with our PFAS issue, as challenging as it might be. Thank you very much, and I'll be open to any questions.
Thank you, Bob. That was a very good summary and update. Just a couple of points to remind the council, when this issue did come up five years ago, I think the city was very fortunate to have approval from the council to proceed rapidly to ensure that the drinking water provided by the City of Issaquah is the best that we can provide, and that it meets all the guidelines. So thanks for all that past work, previous councils, previous folks in engineering. It's an important message to continue to get out to the community. And just a second comment, as a mayor who worked in this field for 20 years, this is a very unusual and commendable relationship that we're involved in. We are at the leading edge of work that is going on throughout the nation in order to figure out how to identify and how to deal with in drinking water. So we are helping to set the standards and the guidance that will be used across the country for other water purveyors, and I'm really proud that our city and ecology and EFR has created a partnership that is a one-of-a-kind in the country. It truly is unique. I'll go next to Council President Hunt to let the council know and the audience know if there have been any emails related to this informational item this evening that you would like to share.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt, and yes, we did receive one email comment on this item, and the comment was regarding the need for an action plan and a question regarding the cost breakdown. That concludes comments on this.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to look in the chat now for questions from council members, and I see that Council Member Hall has his hand up first. Council Member Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Paulie. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Just a quick question for Director York, and thank you very much for the very detailed presentation. I appreciate you walking us through that, and it's very clear to me that the dream team, as you described, has been quite productive, so thank you for taking that so seriously. My question is, so part of Phase 2, which is where we're at right now, is developing this source remediation action plan, and then Phase 3 would be that action plan. Is there, slash, has there been any talk about a Phase 4, about ongoing monitoring post-action plan, or does the partnership end as soon as the action plan is completed?
That's an interesting question. There hasn't been any talk, because we're just focusing on Phase 3, but in this type of cleanup measure, you would have ongoing monitoring, of course, with our production wells, and I'm thinking that we'd be monitoring the continued evolution of our cleanup plan and making sure that we're achieving successful results as a result of our efforts. That's the brief version.
So we don't necessarily know whether or not the partnership would exist beyond Phase 3? I guess I'm just interested in knowing a little bit more about the structure of the partnership post-action plan.
Well, I think my version would be that the partnership would continue. I believe that's been in the interest of all the parties and the extended community. So my goal, from a staff standpoint, is yes, the partnership would continue past Phase 3. And we have some interesting remediation technologies being discussed in Phase 3, which I won't elaborate on tonight, but again, the mayor has some experience in this. I believe we'll continue on with Eastside Fire and Rescue and the Department of Ecology throughout the duration of this thing. So because of the unique interest to the community, and the state, and even the nation, so I think the partnership would continue. Obviously, it's up to the representatives of the partnership to make that decision.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I'm not seeing any other questions at this point in time. I think I'd just add something else on to Director York's comments, and that is that Ecology has expressed an interest in continuing our relationship using another form, either an agreed order or consent decree, or some other form that they're more used to, once that we know that we have some cleanup standards established and we know what we're working towards. So I see this relationship going on beyond into future phases in a very positive way. Those kinds of agreements would obviously come before council for consideration and authorization to execute, so we have a few more steps to go. Not seeing any other questions, I will go on to the next informational item, which is ID 0764, Citywide Work Plan and Capital Improvement Plan Updates, and I'd like to ask City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz to present this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have a presentation to walk through, Madam Mayor. I guess I'd ask the question, given time, if the council would like us to do a short presentation or just answer any questions of the work plan and the capital improvement plan update documents included in the agenda.
That's a great suggestion. I'll look to the chat box to see council comments on that. Council President, Deputy Council President Ray is indicating the chat box, a short presentation. Let's just see what other feedback we get from others. Okay. I think what we'll do, City Administrator Bobkowitz, is move through with a briefer presentation and allow time for questions on the topics that are of interest to the different council members. Thanks.
Great. Again, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Clerk Guser, we can go to the next slide. So what we've done in past updates is to try to give you a sort of a larger sense of where we're at for each of the goal areas within the work plan. The first is the area of mobility. We've been able to make some additional progress from our last update in August, moving forward with a few additional projects, so that is good news for that. Next slide. The master mobility plan progress is probably chief among them. COVID-19, however, continues to impact many of our projects. One change from major challenges to hold was on police traffic management, but we had hoped, as we were preparing the budget for fiscal '21, that we would be able to recommend some additional investments in police traffic management, however, given the COVID-19 crisis, we have not made those changes. So we will continue as we move forward into fiscal '21 to look and see what we can be doing in the area of police traffic management. Next slide. In the goal area of growth and development, as you can see here, kind of a mixed bag of where we stand on strategic action plan items pretty much remain on track as we reported in August, for those that we were able to keep moving forward with. The critical, other critical services, we have been able to pick up on two that are on track. Next slide. From on hold to on track, the design manual for Old Town, work is resumed on that, as well as like some of our State Park environmental impact statement. From major challenges to on hold, at the beginning of the year, we had included a contractor code of conduct as something that was of interest to a few council members. We've unfortunately not been able to make progress on that, and so we've moved that to on hold, really just because of staff resources. Again, this is a two-year work plan, so as we look at moving forward for fiscal '21, those projects that are on the plan that we've not been able to make progress, we continue to hope to do for fiscal '21. Next slide. Environmental stewardship, again, a mixed bag here of things that we've been able to move forward with, given the COVID-19 crisis. Next slide. One that we have been able to move forward with is the electric vehicle infrastructure. The council has asked us to propose an ordinance on that subject, which would be going to the planning policy. Planning Policy Committee next month and back to the council, we hope, in January or February, depending on the number of meetings that planning policy will need for that. And then minor changes to complete the Community Sustainability Summit and Environment Board. We spent much of the summer and early fall talking about the summit. We reported back on the summit, and the council recently approved moving forward with the new environment board, so we're very happy about that. In the area of social and economic vitality, again, you'll see here under other critical services, we've been able to shake a few of those projects loose, given the COVID-19 constraints. Next slide. We continue to expand funding for business grants included in the budget as an additional $500,000, which we hope will certainly help businesses, especially given the ever-changing environment because of COVID-19. Our outreach and case management services pilot program, the council decided to move forward with that program, so we'll be able to start it before the end of 2020 with the Food and Clothing Bank, that position that will be funded, we hope to have onboard, the Food and Clothing Bank hopes to have onboard at the beginning of December. And as we've reported previously to you, the Police Accountability, Human Services, and Equity Action Plan components of that continue to move forward. Next slide. Leadership and Services, again, another mixed bag of where we are at with these priorities. Next slide. From minor challenges to on track, performance measurement, the council this evening will be moving forward with a performance management plan that you've signed off on over the course of several meetings. The strategic plan implementation reporting continues in this document that you have before you. Major challenges to minor challenges, the employee experience, we've been able to continue to focus on some of the issues and programs, working with our employees, and continue to make improvements on our website. From on hold to minor challenges or customer service standards, we've been able to begin to make some progress on that initiative. And from on track to complete the software to automate core processes, as I think we've talked on several occasions, the municipal is an excellent job in pivoting through the challenges of the COVID-19 crisis, so that's one more step in that direction. Infrastructure summary, again, on the strategic action plan, one project remains on hold, and then the other critical service projects, the balance there remains unchanged. Next slide. Capital Improvement Program Updates, we've continued to provide quarterly updates, and the latest quarterly updates included in your packet this evening. The review of the city properties for potential surplusing, we're getting ready, we shared some initial information with the city council a few weeks ago, and we're getting ready to move forward with a presentation and request additional guidance from the council in the first quarter of '21. Next slide. On the capital improvement program update, again, don't want to read to you, but several projects that you're aware of, the pedestrian bridge kickoff and will be fourth quarter, UNEST remains on track. We've started the first of the, well, calling it the Dog Park Tour opened last week, the modifications for the water system, using additional water from Cascade Water, is also been moving forward. Next slide. And that's a very brief overview. Again, the council has asked that we really put the majority of the information in the council agenda packet, which we have done again at this meeting, but certainly happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, City Administrator Bobkowitz. At this moment, I am not seeing that anyone has a specific question, but I will give it a few seconds to allow them to add it in the chat box. And while we're waiting, I just want to point out, if you follow me on Twitter, you will see a very cool drone video that somebody submitted of the dog park today. So, and I went, and it was very fun. Okay, I'll also do a call out for comments. If anyone has any comments before we move on to the next item, I'll look in the chat box.
And Madam Mayor, as we conclude this item, just to say that this is a continuous process, and we'll be looking to the council's calendars, hopefully sometime the latter part of January, to have a council retreat where we'll be able to, the administration will be able to propose any changes or adjustments to this two-year work plan. So we'll be reaching out to the council probably right after Thanksgiving to start scheduling a meeting again, hopefully the latter part of January.
That sounds great. Thank you, City Administrator. I'd like to go to Council President Hunt for a summary of any emails that maybe have been received by the public on this item.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive an email on this item, and the community member who wrote to us by email was in support for prioritizing habitat preservation and also had a question about potential, about the potential for redeveloping the jail space into another use.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Deputy Council President Ray for a comment?
I have two comments, one serious and one, one less so serious. So if City Administrator Bobkowitz ever needs a second job, I think Auctioneer could be in there with the speed with which you move through that material. So thank you very much for that presentation. On a serious note, I'm really excited to see the progress that we are making on these, this action plan in a very difficult time. I was gratified to see the number of things that have moved from, you know, on hold to moving forward and, and the number of things that have completed. So these are difficult times, and thank you for the update. It's, it's good to see progress, and then I feel, I feel, feel good about that. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. I just am looking over at chat to see if there's anybody else who would like to chime in before we move on to our regular, or to our public hearing. And I'm not seeing anyone. Thank you very much, City Administrator Bobkowitz. Oh, sorry, not public hearing. We're moving next to the consent calendar. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes, they have.
And yes, they have.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, I'd like to go to Council President and see if there were any email comments to be shared on any of the consent calendar items. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt, and yes, we did receive several comments on items, or a email that commented on several of the consent calendar items. On the temporary water supply agreement with Cascade Water Alliance, AB 8036, a comment on water usage and question about expected changes to water usage as Issaquah's population grows. On AB 8051, deferred compensation and compensatory time for FLSA exempted non-represented employees, a comment on the duration of COVID and how that would affect this. On AB 8059, State Department of Health Drinking Waters, states revolving fund loan, this community member raised a question regarding, again, the increase in waters usage. And then AB 8063, memorandum of agreement with Catholic Community Services regarding Congregate Meal Program was in support. AB 8068, amendment to inter-agency agreement with Department of Ecology, PFAS groundwater modeling was in support. AB 8070, PSE Green Direct First Amendment was in support. And lastly, AB 8072, reallocation of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act's care funding was also in support.
Thank you, Council President. Is there a motion on the table? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
This is Chris Ray, I second.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded, and I'll go to the city clerk for a roll call vote. Beginning with Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
And Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item of our business this evening is the public hearing, AB 7991, the Proposed 2021 Budget and Salary Ordinance Public Hearing. So we will be conducting, conducting this public hearing and also later this evening asking for adoption of ordinances. I presented the proposed 2021 budget on September 29th, and since that time, council has held four study sessions and deliberated changes to the proposed budget. A public hearing was held on the proposed budget on October 19th, and tonight, the final public hearing will be conducted. Council deliberation and action are requested a little later on in this meeting under regular business, and so I'd like to invite Finance Director Beth Goldberg to make a presentation. Beth.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We've got, hopefully, one last show on the 2021 budget tonight. I've got a short presentation to kick off the public hearing. And I'm going to make this really brief, because I think you're all intimately familiar with the budget at this point. So as the mayor mentioned, we had a preliminary public hearing on the budget on October 19th. RCW requires us to hold two public hearings, a preliminary public hearing and a final public hearing, which is this evening. Here is the schedule that you should be familiar with seeing at this point, and tonight, we are on the final, the final stop on this journey. The 2021 budget is about $14.3 million smaller than 2020. You might recall from earlier presentations that the budget is smaller primarily because of a smaller number of capital investments. There were a number of very large capital investments in last year's budget, including the Signal at Southeast 43rd at Providence Point that were, were unusually large. So that is the largest reason for the budget being smaller this year. This year, we aligned the budget by strategic priorities, and this demonstrates how the city's budget is allocated along those strategic priorities, reflecting the changes that the council discussed at the last study session last week. The general fund budget, which has been the topic of most of our discussions, is $53.4 million this year, and it includes a $5 million worth of fund balance expenditures. And because of the use of fund balance, the size of the general fund budget is larger than 2020. And again, some, a lot of this is one time, so next year, we'll see this come down slightly. And then it's important to point out that we are still feeling the strain while our revenue outlook has improved. We are still feeling a strain from the COVID pandemic, and overall, general fund revenues are down $1.3 million or 3% from 2020. In terms of fund balance, I mentioned that we're drawing down about $5 million worth of fund balance in 2021. We are remaining within the designated policy for fund balance, which says that undesignated fund balance should be between 15 and 20% of general fund expenditures. So you'll see that reflected in the bottom line of this chart, we're at 19%. And then we stay above that 15% target through 2023. What happens in 2024 and beyond is subject to a lot of change, so that's one of those where we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But in the meantime, we are well within the 15 to 20% target set by city policy. And that concludes my presentation this evening, and can pause there for the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Beth. Council President Hunt, before we move into council questions, would you like to summarize any public comments that have been emailed on this topic?
Thank you, Mayor. Because they were comments on the budget, I think I will, I think it would probably be appropriate to summarize them under the item that comes later in our agenda, since we didn't receive any comments by email specifically regarding the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions before we move into the public hearing? And I'll, I'll give a, a little bit of a pause so I can see, give people a chance to sign up in the chat if they do. I'm not seeing any questions from city council. So the guidelines for citizen comments also apply to those that were made under the public hearing, and I'm going to open this public hearing tonight at 8:08 PM. Again, thank you if you have joined us tonight and would like to speak. If you did not sign up in advance, no worries. You can press star three on your phone right now, and that will enable the city clerk to see you putting your hand up. We will call the last two digits of your phone number when it is your turn to make comments. And I do know we have at least one person signed up for public comments already, but I'll check in with the clerk to see who she has on her list. Yes, Mayor, we have a few callers signed up to speak. Just a quick reminder to our phone and callers that when it's your time to speak, I'll request that you unmute. You'll need to press star six on your phone to unmute in our system, and if you muted your own phone, you'll also need to unmute that as well. So the first speaker we have is Megan Altmore. Megan, I'm unmuting you now.
Good evening, Mayor Polly and members of the council. This is Megan Altmore. I live at 2042 Northeast Newton Lane. I work for Hope Link as the Vice President of Community Services, and I'm here tonight to just briefly thank you for your leadership and commitment in helping Issaquah's most vulnerable residents by prioritizing their basic needs. I want to thank you for your partnership in helping Hope Link to provide a package of services to help people stabilize when in crisis and to acquire the skills and tools that they need to help them exit poverty. With your help, Hope Link served over 950 Issaquah residents last year, providing critical services such as flexible financial assistance, case management, housing for families experiencing homelessness, financial coaching, employment services, and adult education. We're grateful for the city staff's recommendations to fund Hope Link in the upcoming biennium. Please know your support makes a big difference. We understand that there are a lot of priorities that the city is facing, as just evidenced by the presentation that you heard, and so we're grateful that you are continuing to prioritize the needs of the most vulnerable within our city. Thank you very much, and we're grateful for your partnership.
Thank you, Megan. We are grateful that we get to partner with organizations like yours, and there's no year like 2020 and COVID to show us how important your relationship is and the work that you do for our residents. Thank you so much. City clerk, who do we have up next on our public speakers list? Yes, our next speaker is Tia Heim. Tia, I'm requesting you unmute now.
Good evening. This is Tia Heim with Shelter Holdings. We own property in the Issaquah Highlands area. We submitted a letter to the council earlier today, but wanted to follow up with some comments. Our, our main concern is that the proposed city budget does not properly disclose, nor does it account for the liability that the city has incurred in connection with depriving Shelter Holdings from economically beneficial use of our property in Issaquah Highlands. This is particularly true because the city's insurance policies do not cover inverse condemnation and regulatory takings of Shelter's property, and your proposed general fund balance doesn't account for and is not adequate to cover this liability. So we just wanted to urge you to make sure you read the letter that, that we submitted, as well as the independent expert reports that are referenced in the letter, and to revise the budget to be transparent about these risks and liabilities and to account for them in your reserves and budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk, who else do we have on our speakers list tonight? Before we go to the last speaker we have signed up, I'd like to remind folks on the phone that you can press star three to indicate that you'd like to make comments. That's star three. And next, we have Kathy McCory. Kathy, I'm requesting you unmute now.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, members of city council and Mayor Polly. My name's Kathy McCory, and I am the CEO at the Greater Isaguas Chamber. I realize you've heard from me several times now regarding the one-time add-in of $500,000 for business grants. I just want to share with you again a few extra thoughts regarding that funding. I think it's going to be needed now more than ever due to yesterday's announcement from Governor Inslee's office that the mayor talked about earlier. We understand that the rise in COVID infection is causing the restrictions to go into place. I think the difference this time around that we need to realize is that the businesses do not have all of the federal support in place that we had this past spring. Your funding is needed now more than ever. So tonight, I ask that you not only approve those dollars, but that you keep them in the forefront of your thoughts, that any other funds allocated in the future or received in the future be converted to programs that will keep our businesses afloat and our residents employed. I also ask that, should this be approved, that the implementation of the grant funding be as swift as possible. Since Inslee's announcement yesterday, I have heard from dozens of businesses expressing fear, concern, frustration, and even a little bit of hope. They have literally brought me to tears. It is important to note that they need not only the funding being discussed here tonight, that they need to be heard, that our businesses need a shoulder to cry on and a strong back to help carry them through this. I know the numerous calls, chats, and emails I have received today, and that the mayor and your economic development team and the chamber are all ready with our open hearts, our soft shoulders, and our strong backs. My ask is that we can count on each and every one of you tonight to pledge the same. Our business community is going to need it. I ask this for the fitness centers needing to close their doors again, the restaurants that need to go back to takeout-only, the business owners that have to lay off employees the week before Thanksgiving, and those that are looking at their 2021 budgets without hope. The mayor graciously accepted many ideas discussed in the Visions Partner Meeting today, and I want to express my appreciation for the willingness to be open to any ideas that we are throwing at the wall right now. And I'd like to ask the board to submit letters of support for these programs and more, and support letters of support for our local businesses. Thank you for all that you do for the community and for the tough decisions you've been making throughout this most difficult period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up or indicating a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, we do. A phone-in caller with the last two digits eight-eight. I'm requesting you unmute now.
Hi, this is Corby Cassler. I am the ED and Program Manager with TIA. Thank you so much for having me. And I feel it's very heartfelt to hear other supporters for our businesses and local jobs, just the impassioned plea we all have for being servants to those businesses and doing whatever we can to ensure that they are able to survive this latest tragedy of COVID. My support is similar to all of yours. It's to put everything we have behind our businesses. And if it asks the question, if it breathes life into these businesses, should we do it? Then the answer, absolutely. It has to be a top priority. I am fully supportive of the $500,000 grant for the businesses, as well as the $300,000 for the streetscape to keep our downtown to be a place that people really want to visit, even in tough times. So thank you very much for that consideration. And also, whatever we can do as individuals to help those businesses, whether it's takeout, it's visiting their websites and doing interactive engagement with them, whatever they need, we're there for them. And DIA in particular, we do promise to be as creative as we can to continue to support them in whatever ways it takes for the next couple of months. So thank you again for hearing me, and thanks so much for everything you do for our community.
Thank you so much for calling in. And if you didn't fully say what DIA means, I just want to make sure everybody who's watching or watches this later knows it's the Downtown Isaguas Association. Thank you so much for coming in. City Clerk, do we have anyone else indicating a desire to speak this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection, and I'm assuming this is from the council, to closing the public hearing? Looking in the chat room, not seeing anything. I now close the public hearing at 8:17 PM. The next item on the agenda this evening is we will be moving into regular business. And we have three items under regular business. The first one is AB 8028. It's the Proposed 2021 Budget, Amending Community Planning and Development Fees. And the action before the council this evening will be to adopt the ordinance. This item was last before council at the October 19th council meeting. And I'd like to invite Management Analyst Jean Paul to present this item. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I'm Jean Paul, the Management Analyst in the Executive Office. And I'll be presenting tonight on amending the community planning and development fees. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the city council a brief summary on the administration's recommended adjustments to CPD fees and the updates to those recommendations since the October 19th council meeting. At the conclusion of the presentation, the administration's requesting that the council adopt the ordinance that will allow these fee adjustments to take effect on January 1st, 2021. As background, the cost recovery for CPD was last studied in 2016 by the FCS Group using data from 2015. The city council acted in January 2017 to update the fee schedule and set an 80% cost recovery target. This year, the administration examined cost recovery again as part of the citywide services assessment. The first update on this was provided at the June 23rd study session. Here's the high-level summary of cost recovery shown at the June study session. As you can see, both revenues declined and expenditures increased each year, which caused cost recovery to decrease below the 80% target in 2019. In addition to providing this historical cost recovery, the administration sought city council direction on the cost recovery target. At that time, the city council did not express a desire to change the 80% target. Because of the declining cost recovery, the administration examined a number of measures that could help restore the desired 80% as part of the 2021 proposed budget. New and adjusted fees were one of these measures. For the fee recommendations themselves, a staff working group developed these proposed changes. First, that group identified areas where adjustments were needed. These included permits for staff spending considerable amount of time with little or no revenue connection. It also included a significant realignment of fees for site work and engineering permitting. After generating these recommendations, the administration contracted with the FCS Group to verify that the changes would achieve the desired cost recovery. The FCS Group consultants did this by examining the past five years of permitting data and creating a projection for the next five years. They then used that projection with the recommended fee changes to create a revenue forecast. In that forecast, which I'll show in greater detail on the next slide, CPD's cost recovery is expected to remain above 80% for the next five years. After confirming the adjusted fees achieved cost recovery, the administration conducted outreach with stakeholders and further refined the fees before arriving at the final recommendations. Here's the projected cost recovery over the next five years. The increase in the first two years is the result of several large, one-time development projects generating higher revenues. In 2023 and beyond, the projection shows that the fees continue to recover at least 80%, even in a relatively normal year that does not have large, one-time boost to revenue. In summary, the recommended fee adjustments will generate an estimated $1.36 million in 2021. This is $250,000 more than estimated as part of the proposed budget. In total, over 50 changes have been recommended. These range from brand-new fees or new fee models, adjustment for existing fees, or code improvements that do not affect revenues. I presented the significant recommendations in detail at the October 19th city council meeting, so tonight, I'll only be presenting on the two changes since then. The first updated recommendation concerns traffic control plans. The original proposal was to increase the fee from $300 to $2,000. Instead of an across-the-board increase to $2,000, the adjusted proposal has an option that stays at $300 for a single-day plan, while multiple-day plans will cost $2,000. This adjustment will minimize the financial impacts on small projects while still allowing the city to recoup the costs for larger projects. This change is not expected to impact the revenue forecast for 2021. The second update is to the street cut fee. The original proposal for street cut fees doubled the fee for cutting into roads that were newer and in better condition. Newer and better-conditioned roads were initially defined by a pavement condition index, or PCI, rating greater than 90. The ordinance has been adjusted to slightly lower the PCI threshold for a double fee to 85. This rating better corresponds to when a road degrades from good to satisfactory and also better reflects the first five years of a new road. This change is also not expected to impact the revenue forecast for 2021. In terms of timing and next steps, the administration's recommending adoption of this ordinance tonight, and the new fees will go into effect on January 1, 2021. That concludes my presentation tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jean. I am first going to go to Council President Hunt and see if there were any public comments you would like to summarize before we go on to council questions.
This is Council President Hunt. We did receive an email comment on this topic, and the community member who emailed their comments was in support of increasing the rates of cost recovery to 90, 95, or up to 100%.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. I am keeping an eye on the chat box now to see if there are any council questions before we move forward. And if there are no questions, if somebody would like to indicate that they would like to make the motion, we could entertain that now. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt ordinance number 2926, amending Chapter 3.64 and Section 109 of Chapter 16.04 of the Isaguas Municipal Code to update the city's land use and site work permit fees and additional fees for inspections, plan review, and other related services.
And it looks like I have a second from...
Hi, this is Chris Ray. I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Again, I'm just keeping an eye on the chat to see if there is any. Council President Hunt for a comment.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I just wanted to thank the administration and the staff that worked on this because I think our comments from our last meeting when we did discuss this in detail were incorporated, especially regarding the street cut fees. And so I appreciate that, and I will be in support.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other comments. I'll give another second. So we will move to the vote. The motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2926, amending Chapter 3.64 and Section 109 of Chapter 16.04 of the Isaguas Municipal Code to update the city's land use and site work permit fees and additional fees for inspections, plan review, and other related services. City Clerk, could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, beginning with Councilmember De Michele.
Aye.
Councilmember Bidman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. I am going to propose and look for head nods or not. We are due for a five-minute break, and if I see a few head nods, we will take that. Oh, some vigorous head nods and thumbs up. Okay. We are definitely taking a five-minute break before we move into our next item. Let's get back together around 8:32. Thanks. The City Clerk, it does look like we have our seven council members back, and I'd like to give Gabe a 10-second warning. Unless I don't have the City Clerk? And I'm here. Okay, feeling better. Welcome back, everyone, from our break. The second item under regular business this evening is AB 7991. It is the proposed 2021 budget and salary ordinance, and the action before council this evening is to adopt these ordinances. The staff presentation for this item was provided under the public hearing, and so I will start with council questions, and then after council questions, move to any emails from the public that the council president would like to share. Are there any council questions? Well, let's go to Council President now to share emails, and if somebody does want to add a question to the comment chat box, I'll keep looking for it. Council President Hunt?
Thanks. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive several emails, and these are the emails that we've received since the last time the council discussed the budget. We received an email from a community member that was opposed to the inclusion of the parks maintenance manager funding and the turf replacement funding, and was in support of the repainting of the sidewalks expense. We received an email comment referencing the city's legal budget, as was also referenced this evening in the public hearing. We received three new emails in support of the small business grants funding that is in the budget. This is in addition to emails that we received prior to the last time we discussed the budget in support of the small business grants. And that concludes the new emails that we've received on the budget.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. Are there any questions from council on the budget or the salary ordinances? I asked the City Clerk if you would be able to put in the proposed motion in case somebody is prepared to make it?
Yes, I will do that now.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no comments or questions, is somebody prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to, one, adopt ordinance number 2927, adopting the 2021 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2021; and, two, adopt ordinance number 2928, adopting a revised 2021 salary schedule for all city employees.
And I see Deputy Council President Ray has his hand up.
This is Chris Ray. I second.
So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. I expect that there aren't questions, aren't too many questions or comments this evening because we have discussed, and I think that the administration has made changes according to the feedback that you've received from council. So firstly, I wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for, I think this will be an uneventful budget night. And I also wanted to highlight some of the things that are in the council president's letter this year. I do think that it will be very important going into 2021, as we continue to face all of the uncertainty around COVID-19 and its economic impacts. I think it's very important that this budget does build a social safety net, as well as factors in the need for small business funding and the front streets, streetscape improvements, things that will support our businesses and our local economy during this time. I think these are very important. And as well as a budget that upholds police accountability and protects public safety. I think that as we go into 2021, we can continue to monitor those things, and I think the budget sets us on a track for doing all those things, well in light of the challenges that we're facing with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. I also wanted to emphasize that we are within the fund balance that is in our financial handbook of the, where we should be for fund balance, which is 19% of general fund expenditures. And I appreciate that very much this year, when there are so many needs in the community, that we are continuing to fund our CIP, not getting behind on infrastructure projects, and also continuing to fund very important and very necessary services for our city. Also in the letter, it speaks to that the $400,000 Community Recovery Fund of the City Council is expected to be a one-time fund that really is a product of the extraordinary circumstances that have come about in 2020, and that we do not expect this to be a contingency fund that we would see for council spending under any other circumstances. And there are some potential uses that were discussed by council at our last meeting that are included in the letter. But again, really adamant that council's will is not to set a precedent in which this would be ongoing, but rather to deal with the unique circumstances in which we had better-than-expected revenue projections towards the end of our budgeting cycle, as well as truly unprecedented community needs that we expect will continue into 2021, and lots of uncertainty around the pandemic. And then additionally, there are a few other things that council would like more information on, which I do call out in the letter, so we can keep track of those, and those will be 2021 items that we will get more information on. Those include the asset management program, that there is funding for scoping for that project in the budget, and then also that council is interested in potentially expanding on community-facing aspects of the equity training work that we will be continuing in 2021, and this would be for future years, but keeping that in mind in 2021. There are two projects that we will get more information on regarding the CIP, and those are Cabin Creek Tributary Stabilization and Central Park Bioswale Improvement, and we will get information on those in early 2021, Q1 2021, to be specific. And then lastly, I did look through the last council member, or yes, Councilmember Mart's, at the time Council President Mart's, letter from last year, and I looked at anything that hadn't been accomplished, and I think that this may be a good thing for council presidents to continue to do. So I looked at the last letter and saw if anything should be carried over into this letter. And there is one, and that is the surplus property plan, and also the Tibbetts Creek, Tibbetts Manor in particular. So I think this is in the work plan for 2021, but also wanted to carry it over into this budget letter, because it was in the last budget letter and wasn't completed in 2020 because of many things. So again, thank you to the administration and mayor for working with council on this budget, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. Thank you, President Hunt, for those comments. I agree with all of them, and I won't repeat any of them. I, too, am going to be supporting the budget tonight, and I just want to say that I think the mayor's office and, in terms of city departments, particularly the Finance Department and Director Goldberg, just did a phenomenal job of putting together a budget for 2021 under extraordinary circumstances, and pivoting, just constantly pivoting, was really remarkable. And for the first time ever, we also have a budget that is consistent with a strategic plan, and that's really, really exciting. And so I wanted to thank you for all the, all the work that you did, and even as we used the strategic plan, we also had to, you know, look through this new pandemic lens. And I'm, you know, I can be proud of this budget, but I think 99% of the work was all on the administrative side, so I'm, I'm really happy with that. And there are many things in there that I think that this community should be pleased with, and that we kept the community in mind and the needs during a pandemic when we are, when we approve tonight, several allocations for things in the community that keep pandemic in mind, you know, park improvements and street, you know, the, the streets, streetscape and businesses, and so many things that will be helping our community. One, the only, the only thing that I wanted to say, that I wanted to keep our eye on next year and make mention of that is important to me, and I know Councilmember Mart has mentioned this as well, is that we keep an eye on workloads and, in particular, police. We have a number of positions that are in our budget and allocated for next year, and I think that's an appropriate number, given the circumstances that we are in. But as we come out of the pandemic, as we have a vaccine, and life begins to get back to normal, whatever that new normal is, we may see changes, and we may see workload changes that we may want to address. And so I think it's important that we keep an eye out on all workloads, and in particular the police department. I know they've been working extraordinarily hard as, as our other first responders. So I just wanted to point out that that's important to me, and as we, as we continue to monitor workloads next year, we will be looking at that as well. At least, that's my expectation. Other than that, I don't have any concerns. It's not even a concern. I just want to mention it, that we'll be looking out for it. And I'm just really, toward the end of this year, pleased that we could offer, that we can approve, not offer, but approve, a budget that meets so many needs. It's really a pleasant surprise that we could do so much. So thank you so much. Thank you, mayor's office, and I get a little emotional thinking about it, because it's really been a tough year for everybody. So this is, this is just really a happy occurrence for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Next up is Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Well, this is my first budget as a city council member here in Issaquah. It was certainly unusual, but I'm feeling a bit nostalgic already, but I'm ready and eager to support this budget tonight. So I guess, in my mind, this budget, which is the product, I assume, of hundreds of hours of staff work and community outreach and council meetings, does really two important things. It balances the needs of our community to respond to the public health crisis, and invests in many of the programs and priorities our residents value deeply. I'm talking about it makes meaningful strides to implement the Issaquah Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan. It supports our local businesses at a time when they definitely, definitely need support more than ever. It makes parks management and leisure a priority. It commits to an ongoing local effort to address climate change. It invests around $18 million in capital projects around town. Like Councilmember Goodman said, it's in line with the citywide strategic plan. You know, it does all this and more, and given, like has been said before, given the economic circumstances going into budget season, I'm very happy with where this budget ended up with. And I also wanted to add on my thanks to Director Goldberg and everyone who had any hand in putting this budget together. Really, really well done, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Going to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Gosh, I will just plus one what my three previous council members have said. Thank you to the administration. I think this really has been an interesting budget for the fact that the administration really did a great job of anticipating the needs of the community, understanding the interest areas of the council members, council members in supporting the community. And so there were very few conflict points because the administration was so thoughtful to all of the needs. And to have all of this happen in the middle of COVID with all of the big issues that we're having to handle, all of the uncertainty of our revenue, and everyone working from home and having to coordinate such a large budget and just all of these aspects, I just really want to commend our team for all of the hard work, and appreciate that we're getting these results for the residents of Issaquah. So wonderful, wonderful situation, and I will also be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Next up, Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the council president for carrying over the, for pointing out the carryover of the surplus property item from my letter of last year, subject near and dear to my heart. This is kind of the budget I sat in on, my 12th budget, and I am just struck by that this was the least contentious budget in the most challenging year. So I agree with Councilmember Goodman that 99% of the work was done by the administration, particularly Director Goldberg, but I want to, I want to paraphrase Leo Tolstoy, and I want to say, "All happy councils are alike, but each unhappy council is unhappy in its own way." And let me tell you, we could have made this an awful process, any one of us, if we had shown up looking to cut political teeth with grandstanding. It could have been very different. So while the bulk of, the vast majority of the work was on the part of the administration, I just want to congratulate Council President Hunt, Council Deputy President Ray, and my fellow council members. We were also a part of making this a smooth process this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Well, being seventh council member to comment is always a difficult place to be, and I don't have any additional wisdom to add to that of my fellow council members. I don't know who said, but there's a saying that crisis reveals character, and I feel like we have had just superb leadership throughout this year. I want to commend the mayor and the administration and my fellow council members, because as Councilmember Mart said, it could have been a very difficult, very difficult year, and instead, we've really pulled together. And like Councilmember Goodman, I was agreeing with her and getting a tear at the same time. It's been very emotional, especially with the governor's pronouncement yesterday, which I think was a large setback for our community and for the state of Washington, and yet absolutely necessary decision on his part, and I know how hard that kind of a leadership decision can be. And so here we are, ready to go into 2021, and I just commend everyone for just the magnificent work that's been done. This is a budget that I am very, very proud to support, and I think it provides not only a good response to our community, but sets the platform for future, really future strategic improvements and progress. And so I will, too, along with my fellow council members being supporting it. So thank you to everybody. So thank you to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I'm looking to see if there is anyone else that would like to make a comment. And if not, then I will reread the motion. The motion on the table for council is to adopt ordinance number 2927, adopting the 2021 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2021. And secondly, adopting ordinance number 2928, adopting a revised 2021 salary schedule for all city employees. And I will ask the city clerk to do a roll call vote. Beginning with Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Mayor, you're muted. I had such a great thing to say, and now I can't remember. I forgot. Just kidding. That passes unanimously. Thank you, City Clerk. Before we move on to our last agenda item this evening, I just want to chastise Chasta as Councilmember Goodman for saying that she was tearing up in a year that we've all been holding our breath and knuckling down and struggling to get through every single thing thrown at us. I also got a little bit teary hearing somebody express it with that much emotion. So don't do that again. Don't do it on camera. It's not fair. But it has been a hard year, and we have a lot of work ahead. But I feel like the budget that you just approved and the work plan that we went through is a roadmap with all of the wonderful qualities that you talked about. And I feel like the administration and the mayor's office and the council and the community really did come together in our absolute show of strength this year to show how resilient we are and how well we can plan for what's coming, because I'm still holding my breath and I'm still all tensed up, because I know we have a ton of work to do. But thank you. Thank you very much on behalf of the community and the 500 hands at City Hall who helped put the budget together, each and every one of them. Amazing, amazing effort. The last item on our agenda this evening is AB 8045, amending IMC 16.35, construction hours. The request before council this evening is to adopt an ordinance, and this is the first time that this item is coming before council. I'd like to invite Code Compliance Officer Chris Gerbowski to make a brief presentation. And I'm not sure, but this might be the first time that you've actually met Chris. I can't remember if he's been on camera with us before or not. So welcome, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor Polly and members of council. I must apologize. This is Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. And Chris will not be joining us this evening, so the part of Chris will be played by me, though I thank Chris for his good work on this item. I will be running through, very quickly summarizing the agenda bill that's in your packet that Chris did author. And also, may I say that following the budget is really a tough act to follow, especially one past like this one was. So I will try to...
Deputy City Administrator, do you mind if I allow the city administrator? I realize I missed that he had a comment, and I believe it's on the last item. And then we would love to hear your presentation.
Sure thing, thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you for letting me have just a couple moments to also reflect on what an outstanding budget process this was. You know, your leadership, Madam Mayor, from the very beginning of the process was, you know, let's do what we can to invest in this community, let's do what we can to lay a groundwork for COVID recovery, let's do what we can to bring resources back to serve the community. So I want to thank you for your leadership and guidance. But certainly, the lion's share of the work has been done by our finance staff. Beth is, is she gone? She may be gone. Well, in her absence, I will simply say how lucky and fortunate we are to have someone of her skill and ability to lead our finance staff. The experience that she brings to Issaquah is something that, you know, since she's not with us, I can say it. You know, we have no right to expect someone of Beth's skills and abilities to be with us and helping, and she does it and does it so well is really great. Jeremy, you're still here, so why don't you at least take your, put your camera back on? Jeremy is one of those new employees that we have who's really never been at City Hall. He started with us right after the COVID-19 crisis happened. I think, Jeremy, you've been in two apartments before you've been in a desk at City Hall. So we really thank Jeremy for his good work. And Susie Mansell, who's not on the call either at this point, you know, Susie devoted her entire professional being over the last six, seven, eight months focusing on bringing you the best budget city council she could. And finally, I need to once again say that you've had two budgets this year. This has not been a one-budget year, but you've asked your staff to come back in the spring, right after adopting the 2020 budget, and to do it all over again. And so that your budget team has, you know, gone through this twice with the skill and clarity and the transparency that they have is really outstanding, and I've been very proud to be part of the team. And I see Bob York and Scott Beerbaum and Stephanie Johnson, also, so on the life, Jeff Watling. You know, each of the department directors as well have worked so diligently, working with their staffs, first through the cuts we made in the early spring, and then as we look to bring some additional resources back online with this budget. So, Madam Mayor, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for letting me have a few moments to crow about the outstanding work your staff has done on the budget.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Krantz. Again, thank you, City Council, for all of your consideration and your vote this evening. I apologize, Deputy City Administrator. Continue with the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder again. So this item is about defining construction activity and expanding the definition of construction activity in order to better define and clarify what activity cannot occur outside of construction hours. So typical construction hours are Monday through Friday and from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And we understand that this has been a problem of what constitutes construction. It's been a problem because the current language is a little confusing for staff to enforce complaints that we receive from the community. It's a little confusing for the community to understand when there is activity occurring on a construction site, what is and what isn't allowed on a Saturday morning, for example. And so we, in the administration, are seeking to help allay that confusion by clarifying the definition of construction activity to include moving vehicles, deliveries, the assembly, dismantling, or maintenance of equipment, and that those would be included as part of the definition of construction activity, such that those activities cannot occur outside of the approved construction hours. And we took this item to the Planning Policy Commission, and they had some concerns that they expressed. They were concerned that the city already had pretty stringent restrictions on construction and construction activity, including the work hours. They had voiced some concerns that the effect of this policy may provide additional limitations, excuse me, that they'll have an economic impact on contractors and may extend the length of the project. And finally, they were not convinced that this was a large, significant problem faced in this city and that there wasn't a large number of complaints that we'd received from residents, such that this really needed to be addressed. So those were the concerns that the Planning Policy Commission brought up. And as an alternative, they proposed instead of amending the definition of what constitutes construction, rather, if there is activity that needs to occur, that's delivery, moving of vehicles, maintenance of equipment, et cetera, if such activities do need to occur outside of construction hours, that the contractor or the developer provide notice 48 hours in advance to the city and to the surrounding community. So that's the planning policies recommendation. There's more information and details about that in the packet for this evening. That said, the administration's moving forward with our original recommendation to you, that we amend the municipal code to expand the definition of construction activity to include moving vehicles, delivery of materials, equipment, maintenance of equipment, et cetera. And at this time, I will open up for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator. Before we go to questions, I'd like to see if Council President Hunt has anything she would like to share that was received via email on this item.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive one email on this topic, and the community member who wrote to us commented that the construction only from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM was clear-cut. That was the only comment that we received by email.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Do any council members have any questions? Oh, I'm looking. I see Councilmember DeMichele is up.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I'm not sure that I liked the Planning Policy Commission's alternative suggestion, but I do kind of take to heart some of the questions that they had around this. And I think my question for you is, what is the urgency here? It feels like this is a little bit rushed and that there wasn't, they did also mention that there wasn't outreach to the community and outreach to some of the construction firms. So I'm just wondering, what is compelling this to come in front of us right now?
Deputy City Administrator?
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. This is Andrea Snyder. I think this was some area of the code that we had an opportunity to clarify, both for staff and for the community. And so we wanted to take the opportunity that we have. If council's direction is for us to go back and rethink other options or provide additional outreach, then that's something that we can do.
Thank you very much. Next up is Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. Andrea, what was your thinking or CPD's thinking on to move ahead with the original proposal instead of the PPC revisions?
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. This is Andrea Snyder again. Our concerns with the recommendations of PPC was that we had an overall goal of first wanting to make sure that as Issaquah, in the future especially, increases, the development becomes increasingly infill development or redevelopment, that we consider the impacts on the existing residents. And as part of that goal, we have heard from our residential community that they would like to have peaceful weekends and to preserve some of that peace and have some of that be free from noise. And so we're thinking about impacts of construction on surrounding communities. That's one goal for the clarification of this language. Another goal, and the PPC's recommendation doesn't do that, another thing that I think I implied earlier is this idea of decreasing confusion. And so if we have residents who are disturbed by noise that's taking place on a construction site outside of construction hours, it may be difficult for them to understand that that's technically not defined as construction, it's delivery of materials or it's these other things. They may look at it and say, well, this looks like construction to me. They're, you know, taking down a crane, or, you know, that's an example. But so I think we really wanted to make sure that it was clear for the community and the surrounding residents and that it also, that what we move forward with also helps preserve some of the peace for those that would otherwise be impacted by such activity.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator. Councilmember Walsh with a question. Oops, nope, sorry. Councilmember Hall with a question, followed by Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Deputy Administrator Snyder, first and foremost, thank you very much for the detailed packet, and thank you for answering my questions via email. Very helpful. My one outstanding question has to do with one of the Planning Policy Commission's concerns, which was that Issaquah's limitations on work hours are already stricter than surrounding cities. Can you get into that a little bit more? Is it largely stricter than surrounding communities or just the, you know where I'm going with that? Anyways.
I believe I do. Let me attempt to answer. Thank you. This is Andrea Snyder again. I think that their comment was around the restriction of work hours to a Monday through Friday schedule and that many surrounding cities also allow Saturday work. And in Issaquah's case, we allow Saturday work only if there's a public benefit. And so we have stipulations to do that, but we typically need to understand and have them demonstrate for us that there's a significant public benefit to Saturday work.
Thank you, deputy. We have Councilmember Walsh up next.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Given the large-ish difference between the administration's recommendation and the PPC's conclusion off of this, I'm wondering about the timeline. What would be the effect if we said, no, maybe this needs a little bit more baking, we need to think about what we're looking to achieve and other alternatives and other ways? Can you talk to me about any impacts of doing that and then what the process might look like?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Andrea Snyder. As far as the timeline goes, our timeline is pretty flexible. We can certainly take more time with this, if that's something that council would like. If that's the case, then I would really love to hear from council if there's particular direction that they would like us to pursue or things that we should consider that we haven't yet considered, or additional goals that you may have with this clarification of language. So we certainly welcome input that would help us determine the process moving forward. One of those steps could be additional outreach to some stakeholders. I'm fairly confident, I know what master builders would likely have to say about this one, but we can certainly do more outreach to have that conversation. And we could also take it back to Planning Policy Commission and try to identify alternatives if this suggested amendment is, if we need to look for other alternatives.
Thank you. I'm looking for additional questions, and if not, I would be looking for somebody to make a motion so that you can have some deliberations and provide your thoughts and comments.
Mayor Polly had a question.
Yes, I just saw that. So before we go to the motion, Councilmember DeMichele, what's your question?
Just, I just want to drill down a little bit further on, I know that you, the department received complaints from neighborhood folks, but was there any outreach to people in the neighborhoods, asking them about the proposed changes? Or were their complaints just part of your thinking in terms of developing this proposed ordinance?
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. This is Andrea Snyder. Their complaints that we've received since the code was revised are what, is the form of the reasoning for why we wanted to revisit the code language and provide additional clarity. We did not provide any additional outreach beyond what we've heard from communities to date.
And before we go to the motion as well, I believe City Administrator Bob Krantz would like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the councils. Kind of a follow-up on Councilmember D. Michelle's question. When these issues came to me from community members, and as Ms. Snyder had mentioned, you know, I agreed with the inconsistency. That when we say there are no construction times, I think people take that to the bank. The issue of infill, the issue of people, you know, especially those who have been home for the last eight months, when they know that you can't work on Saturdays, and they see work on Saturdays. And so in talking with Mayor Polly, when this issue came up a couple of months ago, you know, it really was me who said, you know, I think we owe it to our residents, that, you know, we have rules that say you can't work on the weekends. They see people making deliveries. They think it's work. And they've been sitting home, having to deal with the construction through this COVID period. It just seemed like it was a fair and reasonable way to make the adjustment. So I think it, from my perspective, really wasn't something that required a lot of community discussion. For me, it was just a matter of what are we, what are we providing to our residents? What kind of assurances are we providing? And if this change in the code, you know, helps just make it simpler for the average resident who is looking for some peace on the weekend, you know, that was good enough for me to recommend to the mayor that we move forward with this as an administrative change, or administration-sponsored change moving forward.
Okay, it looks like, thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. It looks like our attorney, Mr. Haney, would also like to make a comment to everyone.
I was just going to comment that when this issue came to me from Chris Grabowski, the question that had arisen was, we had received a complaint about the moving of equipment on or off a site on a weekend. And the code contained no definition of construction activity. It just said, "Construction activity is prohibited except during the specific hours." So we were struggling with the issue of, well, is just driving a vehicle off of the site, or moving the equipment off the site, is that construction activity, or is it not? It's not actually constructing anything. The question is just moving the equipment on or off the site. And so that was kind of the origin of the issue. And that's why the code section that's being proposed defines construction activity. You can define it in any way that you want, that is appropriate to meet the, your intent as a council, but that was the origin of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. I'm not seeing any other comments, or, oh, a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. This is probably a question for Jim Haney. In the proposed ordinance, construction activity defined, it says, "Construction activity means any activity directly related, directly related to an active permitted project." What about wiggle room here, if somebody argues that it's indirectly related?
Can you possibly tell me what you think indirectly related would be?
Well, I think if this is the, if we had directly related before in the definition, and we didn't have such an expansive definition here, then I think the argument could be made that it was indirect, not direct. So I'm wondering if we possibly expand it to say, "Any activity directly or indirectly related." I don't know. Just, it's just my thought. As soon as you, as soon as you have something in here that's directly, and particularly, if you're using your brain, or you have an attorney, you're going to go, well, this is indirectly related. So that's what, that's really what I'm, if we're trying to be clear, I'm wondering if we need to be clearer.
We can certainly do that. The language that was put together there is Mr. Grabowski's language, so I'm not exactly sure what he meant, or what his concern was there. I presume it was to make it easier to enforce, that he could find that it was related to a permit. But, but, you know, I don't think there would be an issue with saying directly or indirectly.
All right. Well, maybe it's something you can look at if we have any other questions. I would think we either take out directly, and just say, "Related," or we say, "Directly" or "Indirectly," because we already have the "not limited" too. So if we want to give ourselves the maximum definition here, and the least amount of wiggle room, then the clearer we want to be, the better.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. That is a very interesting suggestion. There are many activities that can happen on a site that someone could argue are not directly related to construction. Stockpiling fence, stockpiling materials, all kinds of things that can be done without a permit. So, interesting. I'm not seeing any other questions at this point in time. If we're ready to move into discussion and deliberations, is somebody prepared to make a motion? Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I move to adopt ordinance number 2929, relating to construction hours, amending IMC 16.35.005 to add a definition of construction activity and adding IMC 1635.030, exempting certain activities from the limits on construction hours.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Hall?
Thanks, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I'll second that motion.
That's been moved and seconded. We're going to move into discussion deliberations. Oh, we have a motion to amend, which I assume I could take right now, City Clerk? Yes. Okay. Councilmember Goodman, you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. And I would be willing to amend my proposed amendment if we have any response from Jim Haney. I would make a motion to amend the definition of construction activity to remove the word "directly."
So the motion is to move the word, remove the word "directly." And Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the word "directly" from the definition. Discussion. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So my question is to Jim Haney, and if he has any opinion on whether that's, if, to make an amendment, to make it clear, does he have any opinion on whether the way to go would be to remove "directly," or to add "indirectly" and "directly"?
You know, I think removing the word "directly," just in saying that it's related to a permit, gives you a broader application. So if that is your intent, I think that language change is fine.
Great, thank you.
And Councilmember Goodman, would you like to speak to your amendment?
No, because I think I spoke enough to it already before I made the amendment. Anybody is unclear, they can ask me a question. Thanks.
Just thought I would give you a chance. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the amendment? I give a couple more seconds? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to remove the word, oops, we do have a comment. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. Just a quick one. I think if we're going to move forward with the underlying motion, this amendment to the motion just makes sense. So I'm going to support this amendment.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Great. The amendment is to remove the word "directly" from the definition. And I'll go to the clerk for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Beginning with Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. So the amendment carries. I'll go back to Deputy
Council President Ray. Would you like to speak to the main motion?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. Just a couple thoughts on the main motion, and I think City Administrator Bob Kowits spoke to this really well. I think this makes sense from a couple of perspectives, and this is one where I'm going to rely a little bit on Councilmembers Goodman and Martz, who were around in 2016 when the revised hours of construction ordinance was passed. But this seems to be, in my mind, as we move into an area where we're doing more construction in infill and in existing neighborhoods, the intent was to provide peace and tranquility in non-standard business hours, so after seven and on weekends. So this is consistent with the intent. And the second word that comes to my mind is expectations. And it's really, the community doesn't know the difference between if I'm, you know, doing construction activity or removing equipment, all I know is it is disruptive to me, and has an impact on my quality of life. So from a community perspective, it helps to deal with what I should and shouldn't expect at hours of construction. And also, it takes ambiguity out of the question for the developers. They know what they can and they cannot do. And I think finally, the last thing is it provides clarity. You know, the situation that Jim, Mr. Haney referenced was, we had a situation where we didn't know how to interpret the code. It was ambiguous. So it provides clarity. And I think anything we can do to make our code clearer and less ambiguous makes us stronger for it. So I think this is, this is in the community's interest to move forward with this.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I believe the second for the main motion was Councilmember Hall. Did you have any comment?
Sure, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I seconded the motion, first and foremost, because I wanted there to be a discussion about this item. I've actually got two arguments kind of playing out in my head on either side right now. So maybe I'll just comment on that, and then hopefully hear more comment from the other council members. The biggest thing coming into this meeting, in terms of a point of concern for me, was just the difference in recommendations from the Planning Policy Commission and from administration. Wasn't sure if I felt super comfortable about that. But I thought City Administrator Bob Kowits and Deputy Council President Ray made a really good point as well about, you know, ensuring our policies actually reflect reality, they're aligned with intent, and, you know, respect for neighbors, especially as new development will be closer and closer to existing neighborhoods now. I thought that was a really compelling point. I'm leaning that way. I would like to hear what the rest of the council thinks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Any other council members wishing to comment? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. One of the things that the Title 18 ad hoc has on our list of values that we want to include as we revise the Title 18 part of our code is around consistency. And this is, as far as I understand, is in 16, so it's not in Title 18. But at the same time, I think it's relevant. You know, we know that after 18, we will probably also have to look at Title 16. And so that is a ways off. And I think making changes to improve quality of life for residents, even though it's not fixing the consistency across the whole code, I think that incremental improvements, as they come up, is appropriate. At the same time, I recognize that doing these improvements that way, kind of like picking one piece and doing that, I think it doesn't, it doesn't make as much sense as if you were to, you know, make sure that everything has a definition, for instance. But this definition came up. We didn't have a definition in code. We're now adding it. And I think, I think that makes sense to do, so I will be in support.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm going to vote no on this. I think that the combination of the difference between the administration and the commission, combined with the fact that this is happening quickly, I just feel like, we normally say we like to err on the side of getting citizen and community input. I certainly think there's folks that would support doing this, but I just feel this one's a little bit hasty. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Any other council members? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I'm going to vote in support, because I think the clarifications here are consistent with the intent of the code, and that the code was not, I just think it needed clarification, and did go to Planning Policy, which is where it should have gone, and back to us. So, and I agree with Council President Hunt, that where clarity is needed, where we have an issue, we should address it, even though I know we're going to deal with Title 18 later on. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember D. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Just very briefly, I am leaning towards supporting this. I do think the Policy Planning Commission raised some very good issues, and especially about the outreach process. But I do accept the explanations that were provided by the administration. And I think going into the future, if we can just be sure that we're very listening to, you know, how this is playing out, how it's working, is it solving the problem we want to solve. But I think we can go ahead, or at least I feel comfortable going ahead tonight and saying yes, and then watch how it works on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle. I am just going to look at the chat box to see if anybody else wishes to comment before we call for the vote. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I just want to acknowledge also PPC, because I thought they were very thoughtful. And, you know, they brought up some really good points. But I think, you know, moving forward, it's, what's the best way to move this forward? And I also agree with Councilmember D. Michelle in that, from a process, and also Councilmember Martz, from a process perspective, you know, citizen feedback is a, you know, something we value very much. That being said, I think that we're at a point where this is a decision I think we can make tonight. And I think if we were to go out and do a round of citizen feedback, I'm not sure that we would get much new information. And so those are just my final thoughts, in recognizing the important work that was done to get this here.
Thank you. I'm back down my list here. Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Seeing no one else in chat that would like to add a further comment, the motion before the council is to adopt ordinance number 2929, relating to construction hours, amending IMC 16.35.005 to add a definition of construction activity, and adding IMC 16.35.030, exempting certain activity from the limits on construction hours, as amended. And I'll go to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Beginning with Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
No.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one nay.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. That passes, six to one. And the next item on the agenda this evening is good of the order. Order. If anyone has anything for Good of the Order, please feel free to add it in the chat box. I'll jump ahead and start reading some meeting notices while I'm waiting to see if anybody would like to make a comment. So the November 24th council study session is canceled, and the following upcoming meetings will be held virtually. There will be a city council regular meeting on Monday, December 7th, with potential agenda items including a public hearing on extension of temporary regulatory relief for businesses, the 2020 comprehensive plan amendments and rezones, the 2021 legislative agenda, repealing Chapter 8.05 retail carryout bags, an extension of RV park management agreement, and a final 2020 budget amendment. The city council meeting following that will be on, sorry, that's city council regular meeting, the city council special meeting following that will be on Tuesday, December 8th, at 8:00 a.m. for the annual legislative breakfast with the city council and Issaquas state legislators. Going back in to see if there are any Good of the Order, and I'm believing Councilmember Hall has commented.
Just a really quick one, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I just wanted to end by saying, you know, given the public health crisis escalating numbers and new restrictions placed by the State Executive's Office, I just want to say how very much our local business community, and first responders, and healthcare workers are on my mind and in my heart over these next couple of weeks. And to the members of the community, we are not going to beat this if we don't come together to do so. If we fragment, if we find opportunities to disagree and to not support the restrictions that are in place that are designed to protect us, we're not going to succeed as quickly as we would like to, and lives could be lost. So I just wanted to underline that, and just say how very much our business community and healthcare workers are on my mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Totally agree. It's been a very difficult year, but we need to hang in there, if we have more to do. I am so impressed with what the community has done, and the community spirit has shown. I just wanted to sort of drop another little nugget out there. Council President Hunt and I are both considering if we can pull together a 2020 Local Hero Award, that would be some way of collecting all those fantastic stories of what the community did to hold on and protect itself and pick itself up during this crisis. I am sure there are tons of stories, because when I look around town and see how we're doing, and we're doing well, it's because everybody's commitment. So we're hoping to gather some fabulous information to share, and some thank yous to give out to those in our community, like the frontline workers, and like all those community members who have supported businesses through doing takeout and buying gift cards. There's just going to be a million things to share, but thank you for those closing comments. Very good. There was an executive session that was held earlier this evening, and the last item on our agenda this evening is adjournment, and so there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:36. Stay well. Thanks.